Welcome, everybody. Kevin couldn't be here tonight. He had a conflict with a school board meeting. So he asked me to take over. This is my first time doing this, so I'll be happy to take corrections if I make mistakes as we go along. The first item is to review the agenda for addition, removal, or adjustment of any items. Does anyone have any comments on the agenda? Anybody? Okay, well, I have a comment. So we we're grateful to have Adam Lujie here from the Addison County Regional Planning Commission, who is going to do, give us a presentation on governance and roles of boards, planning commissions. So to not waste Adam's time, we thought that we would save the miscellaneous correspondence until after his presentation. Assuming that we have time to do it then, rather than make him listen to all our miscellaneous issues. Anyone have any comments or objections to that? Okay, then I guess we will go ahead. So the first item is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was in July. Since we skipped the August meeting. Anyone have any changes to make to the minutes from the July meeting?
Just that at the bottom, it said that we were gonna have our next meeting the first week in August, and we skipped that.
And we skipped it, right.
I don't know if that needs to be noted.
Do we need to note that, Peggy?
Sure, yeah, I can fix that.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you for catching that, Shannon. Okay, can we have a motion to approve the minutes then?
Motion to approve?
Shannon, make some motion. Second, Melissa, second. Go on, favor, say aye. Okay, I guess it's unanimously approved. Our second item is the zoning administrator report. Chris, do you have anything to add?
The only thing is, they've started to break ground on the housing project next to the fire station.
Oh, great. That's good. Okay, any questions for Chris, anybody? All right, our next item then is the ARPA Funding Advisory Committee update. That would be Rob. Rob, do you have anything to tell us about what's going on with ARPA funding?
Sure, so quickly, we've had a bunch of outreach stuff over the last month primarily. And there's some more coming up with that event this week as well. And then after that, I think that's going to move from the gathering stage into the evaluation stage, trying to put together recommendations to gather, to get to the select board. So it's moving along and quickly coming to an end of our gathering phase. That's where that's at.
So just two cents on that. I sit on this with Rob as well. So the event's on Thursday night, anyone's watching, free spaghetti dinner. It's the baby free food. And then about half an hour of your time to brainstorm and just throw ideas out of what people are looking for. As far as the outreach goes, I don't know if anyone can see, all the postcards have been distributed at different events and election day. We've had a few hundred responses so far, so we've got a lot of data to sift through. Rob, we have a lot of data to sift through.
Where is?
It's at the elementary school in Bristol.
Oh, okay. Great. Are you, are you all looking at the data as it comes in? Do you notice any trends, or are you all waiting till it all comes in?
I've been looking at it because I'm the one collecting all the cards and all the website information. It's a lot of, all over the place. There's been a few trends, I would say, which we saw in our first meetings, affordable housing, daycare, and support for the schools. Which unfortunately, I don't think a million dollars fixes any of those three problems, but, but what the attendance there's a bunch of ideas that come through that even if they don't end up in the ARPA request, they may end up actually with you folks. Things like the affordable housing, that 25% of the people responded, thought that that was important to our community. And maybe that's a focal point for the planning commission. So you may get a handful of suggestions from a planning standpoint that came through that process.
Yeah, that's very, that's very helpful.
We don't want to lose the data.
Yeah, absolutely, okay.
So that will play into, or could play into this project, depending on what they say.
Yeah, that's just what I was thinking.
Same here, I was like, it's like the timing is almost perfect as far as part of this project and the housing portion. So, that's all I got. Sorry, I have to jump all over.
That's great.
No, glad you did. Glad you did. I'm more of an overview person, concise.
Anyone besides me say we should do a survey pool?
Yeah, quite a few.
Oh, all right. I'm all for that. I love the Middleburg pool. It's too far. Okay, sorry, that was a personal interjection. So we, as I said, we will skip the miscellaneous correspondence until later after Adam. We don't have any continuing business at the moment. Except, well, I would say one continuing business is we do have, and Kevin sent it out, the signed contract with the Addison County Regional Planning Commission to go ahead with the bylaw modernization study. So that's great. That moves us along. So new businesses, commission training, general governance and rules of board. And Adam, that's over to you.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. And thank you all for having me here and listening. Chris, you're gonna help me run this.
Trying.
Awesome, good. Can everybody see that? Okay, great. So I know some of you, but let me introduce myself to the rest of you who may not know me. I'm Adam Lujie. I'm director of the Addison County Regional Planning Commission. I've been doing this for about 20 years or so, so written a lot of different town plans, a lot of bylaws, subdivision regs, including a hand in each of yours. So pretty familiar with Bristol. This is really a, meant to be a primer for all of you. So it involves the planning commission, the zoning administrator, the development review board in Bristol, and the your legislative body, basically your select board. And it's just meant to be, well, I'm on this board, how do I interact with other people? What are my responsibilities? What are their responsibilities? How does, how do we all work together to get Bristol's business done? And why is the structure this way? So if you would flip to the next slide, Chris, that would be great. And this is gonna be what I'll call a really quick history lesson on just where zoning and planning regulations came from. So 1921 is Vermont's first for, for basically creating comprehensive plans. Now, way back when, basically when the towns in Addison County were first being laid out in the 1700s, they were all pretty well laid out. You had a center of town, you had a place where the church was gonna go. Leave lands, you had basically other bodies laying it out. So they were planned, but there was not this formal state planning body. So the state got involved basically in the 20s, 30s, and has continued to get involved. That's important for local planning because Vermont is what's called the Dillon's Rule state, which means that, oh, there you go, Dillon's Rule. Basically, local planning, town planning, is enabled by state statute. So state statute gives you, gives the town of Bristol the authority to create a plan, gives the town of Bristol the authority to create zoning or subdivision regulations. There are specific things that it does not give. So for example, the power to regulate energy production facilities. So think of the solar facilities. You can participate, but that goes to the PUC, the Public Utilities Commission. Hunting and fishing, you really can't regulate. So the state reserves some things to itself, but it is given planning and zoning authority to the town of Bristol. The big, I guess you have. Help me with that?
Not sure who's, somebody's not muted. We got some background noise there. It'd be Peggy.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just keep going. And I can't see any of you on this now because we're sharing the the slide projections. So if you have a question or you want to interrupt me, please speak up. Okay, and unless I hear you, I'll, I'll, I'll keep going.
I can see them, so if I do see somebody hop on, I will let you know.
Okay, thanks, Chris. So, early planning concerns focused on public buildings, so separation of uses. The very first zoning case before the United States Supreme Court, Euclid versus Amber Realty was basically about zoning Amber Realty. It was a village outside of Cleveland, Euclid, Ohio. And Amber Realty was hoping to put in a lot of industrial uses on its parcel. Euclid, Ohio, basically passed some regulations saying, no, you can use these uses here and not there. Went up to the United States Supreme Court. The Supreme Court said through the police power, so to protect health benefits, welfare of the people. Basically, towns, municipalities can enact zoning ordinances. And that was back in 1926, so that's nationally where that came from. Vermont became more increased in economic development and growth in the 60s. And they had some concerns about environmental protection and growth management, so you can look at the ski industry and the interstate. That's when a lot of the state of Vermont's regulations were first passed, so Act 250 in 1970, 1968 Municipal and Regional Development Act. So again, the, the place where all your power comes from are these different state regulations. State statutes. And they've been, they've been going on ever since. So, next one, roles and responsibilities. Thank you, Chris. So we're gonna look at three different functions, three different roles, and it's it's similar, municipal government is similar to state or federal government there in that we have a legislative role, we have a quasi judicial role, we have administrative roles, which are largely executive roles. So the legislative role is largely writing and approving the municipal plans and bylaws, conducting those hearings. And it's shared by basically the select board. And I'm gonna talk specifically to Bristol, so it's shared by the select board and by the, by the planning commission. So when you think about how you adopt either plans or bylaws, basically the planning commission's gonna create them generally. There are some exceptions to that rule, but the planning commission creates them. They hold a hearing, they approve them, they pass them to the legislative body, to the select board. They hold their own hearing. They then approve them, and actually in Bristol, they send them one step further onto the voters. And that's relatively unique. There are some other towns in Addison County that do it, but not all that many.
Which part is unique on that? The two hearings or the referral to the, to the electors or?
The referral to basically the public to vote. So in a lot of towns in Addison County, they've let the, they've allowed the select board to retain the power to basically pass the either plan or the bylaw and not send it out to a vote of the general public.
Is that, is that just, is that written someplace like in law in Bristol, or is it just customary?
They chose to do it a while back, and we've always said, once you go down that road, you have to continue down that road.
So Bristol voted to do it. And, and I can't remember exactly when, but there, there was a, there was a vote. Bill Sarah might remember. But I can't remember exactly when, when you voted to take that authority. And, and once the people take that authority, they have to vote to rescind it themselves, to give it back.
Slim had a question?
Another question, they're just, that vote took place when the gravel pit controversy was raging. And people thought they should have a say in whether or not that gravel bit came in down there on the Lathrum property, and that's when the vote, that's when it changed. I can't remember the year. Anyway. No.
15 years, 15, 20 years ago?
Yeah, around there.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to quasi judicial function. Basically, it's interpreting and applying the land use regulations. The slide talks about appropriate municipal panel, and several of the next slides do. In Bristol, you've adopted basically a planning commission and a development review board. The planning commission takes care of the legislative functions, the development review board takes care of the quasi judicial functions. So we can look at some of the other slides and the other way of doing it, but for Bristol's purposes, the quasi judicial function is large for, for planning anyway, is carried out by your development review board. And then there's the administrative function. That's largely held by Chris for, for planning purposes. He, it involves mostly non discretion, discretionary acts such as issuing permits. He needs to basically faithfully follow the plain meaning of the regulation. So if it says it, he can do it. If it doesn't say it, he can't do it. Okay. So moving on to legislative functions, and again, this talks about the legislative body and the planning commission. I wanna focus on here. I added again, on this one, I have reviews and edits municipal plan adopts or sends to voters, and Bristol sends to voters. Down on the planning commission, I wanted to focus on the, on the last task. So secures grants and performs non regulatory planning implementation. And the reason I want to focus on it is because not many planning commissions know they have the ability to do that. You spend a lot of time on the plan, and then a lot of time on the regulatory function, so the subdivision regulations or the zoning regulations. About five years ago, I think the legislature changed the planning cycle from five years to eight years to give planning commissions more time to focus on. They didn't, they didn't want to feel like the planning commission was in a cycle, well, we work on the plan, oh, now we've got to work on the regs. They wanted to give you a little extra time to, to be able to do some of the the non regulatory plan implementation. So you know, that could be the fun part of planning, honestly. That can be securing, securing grants for recreation or pools or sidewalks or other, other infrastructure, physical infrastructure that the planning commission through your plan and through your, through up to your select board is deemed, yeah, that, that's something that the town wants to invest in. That's a piece of infrastructure that the town wants to invest in. So I really, I just wanted to, to point that out to all of you.
I have a question.
Yes?
Yes. When you were talking about grants for sidewalks and for other municipal sites, has this planning commission been doing that in the past, or is that, I thought that was coming from the select board?
So remember, you, you're appointed by the select board. The select board passes, passes the budgets. So they have control over the money. They have the ability to say to you, planning commission, would you engage in a study and look at where we need a sidewalk, or whether or not a pool is a good idea, or how we improve the parks in Bristol, or a, a bunch of other, a bunch of other things, and I would say related to physical planning infrastructure that Bristol, things that Bristol, the town of Bristol would like to see. So things that you write in your plan, implementing things that write in your plan.
So they have, they, they have the ability to ask, task us with that, but that doesn't mean that they necessarily do. They, they can also do it.
That's absolutely true. And there's an example of that now. They're doing the sidewalk study. On Munsel Road.
Munsel, yeah.
We, we have not been asked our input on that at all, as far as I know.
Same with the bike, the bicycle. Pedestrian group, same thing where they're, they're that out. Hasn't been from the planning question yet at all.
Okay, they sent us their minutes.
Right, which is odd, but that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to quasi judicial functions, and I'm gonna ask you just to go to the next slide. You can see there, that slide had planning. Whoop, I think you went to.
This, three, one minus one?
Well, that'll work. I, no, that's fine. That, that works. So, I would tell you to look at just cross off planning commission and zoning board of adjustment. It doesn't necessarily apply to Bristol. That's the system that you used to have, where the planning commission had some quasi judicial functions, and the zoning board of adjustment had others. About 10 years ago?
Seven, eight years ago.
Seven, eight years ago, you moved to a planning commission and development review board system. Planning commission really now does planning legislative work that we just talked about. Development review board has all of the quasi judicial functions.
So like I said, we finally do it right. The planners plan and the reviewers review.
Yep, membership can overlap between them if you choose to, so you have some interaction, i.e., you know, the, the plans or the regulations that you created. Planning commission should, don't quite function as we'd like, and we'd like you to change, next time you do it, we'd like you to change X or Y. So a little feedback, it can be nice for the boards, but it does allow you to focus on responsibilities, and people don't get caught between, say, the planning commission and the zoning board of adjustment if they're have different views on what should happen. Appropriate municipal panel. It just means who is the border planning commission that is charged with the responsibility to undertake a certain action. That's what we've just been talking about. So if you see that in the in the legislation or somewhere else.
It's in our bylaws. We use it in our bylaws too.
You use it in your bylaws sometimes. It's when you don't know whether there's gonna be a DRB, or whether there's gonna be a ZBA, so the legislation speaks to it broadly. So know that Bristol has a DRB, and that's what you, they handle quasi judicial functions, and that's what you should be worried about. Okay, administrative function. So the roles of the zoning administrator. So what are, what are Chris's roles, and how does he interact with you and interact with the, the development review board, and to a lesser extent, the legislature? So the legislative body or the select board. So Chris assists applicants with permitting, determines the appropriate process of review, i.e., all right, I've got an application here, what's it for? Can I do it? Do I have to give it to the DRB? Is it allowed at all? So basically, he's, he's helping the, the applicants and also controlling the flow of information back and forth between the applicants and the board. So coordinating across permitting processes, issuing notices, issuing zoning permits where, where the application is for an approved use or a by right use. Chris also conducts enforcement, and that's where his relationship with the legislative body or the select board is important. Because the legislative body basically controls the next level of the process before the environmental court. So it would go if Chris is, issues a by right permit, and someone appeals it, they go to the development review board. If someone appeals the development review board, it goes to environmental court. The party in the environmental court is the legislative body. And they control whether or not they want to pay for an attorney or not, whether, how, how they want to act in environmental courts. So Chris needs to have a good relationship with the legislative body as well. He, he needs to know that they have his back, and if he enforces something, that they will support him. Both financially and morally, otherwise it can be a pretty lonely job for Chris.
Yes, yes, it can. Okay. So does Vermont have an environmental court system? You said, you said it goes to the environmental court.
Yes. Yes, it's, it's a division of Superior Court. But it basically handles appeals from zoning boards of adjustment. I shouldn't have. Yes, they do. Yeah. And they're, they're looking at maybe changing that back, or the legislature's been looking at maybe, maybe changing that back to district district commissions, but for right now, it goes to environmental court. And having them both go there makes some administrative sense, because that way you don't get town permits going one way and state permits going another way. Okay, informed municipal boards on local permit activity. So those are, that's, that's Chris's role. Actually, this is the slide that I, I wanna kind of just get rid of. You don't have a PCZBA, so let's not confuse the matter.
There we go.
Let's go to the PC. So again, legislative body has a legislative role, adopts the town plan or bylaws, and approves town attorney expenses. So I just talked about that a little bit. That's what I, what I wanted to highlight, but and for you as the planning commission, you need to know that after you hold your hearing and approve your plan or bylaws, it's gonna go to the select board, and they're gonna hold their own plan, or hold their own hearing, and ultimately either adopt it and send it to the voters or not. So you all, as a planning commission, need to be cognizant that, hey, there's another body that's gonna review that, this, and we need to understand the politics of that body and their opinions, and we need to be a little bit pragmatic as to what we, the work that we do, so that we know it will get through the legislative branch. And, and while you're writing them, communicate with the legislative branch, hey, we're thinking about doing this. What do, what do you think? So that, you know, once you've done all this work and held your hearings and approved something, you don't get to the next level when they say, well, nope, not doing it, because they have the ability to not do it. They can hold their hearing, and they can never put it before the voters if they choose to.
Or make major modifications.
Or make major modifications. Yes.
Yep. So I have a question. When the, when the planning commission say we have to hold a hearing, is that that have to be a separate thing, or is that just part of our meeting? We say this meeting will be, we'll invite public comment on it. I, I don't remember us holding a separate hearing for the the plan we just approved, although I came in very late in the process.
We did.
Did we? Okay, I, I remember that.
We're gonna get to that in just a little bit, because there's a difference between just a public meeting and a public hearing. They can feel the same, but the notice requirements are different. Things of that nature. So, so you definitely held a hearing. Let's see, we've kind of focused on each of these other things before. Again, municipal plans, bylaws, capital plan and budget, other studies, other grants that can work on implementation if your select board enables that. But keep it in mind, that can be some of the fun work. Implementing your plan can be, can be fun. And again, development review board handles all of the quasi judicial functions. Okay, open meeting law. So I'm gonna, I'm actually gonna pause before I get into the open meeting law for just a second for all of you. Because we've kind of dealt with, well, what's our responsibility? What's Chris's responsibility? What's the select board's responsibility? And, and how do we interact, and what do we do? So I went through it relatively efficiently, but I wanna give, before we go into how do we conduct our, our meetings, see if any of you have any questions about roles responsibilities.
So one thing I, I know this is that there seems there are two different relationships that the planning commission could have with the select board. One is in which the select board says go ahead and do your thing, whatever it is, or, but not give any specific instruction, or the select board could say, we would like you to take on project X or Y or, or Z. Is that, is that an accurate description of the situation?
Um. Kind of, I I guess I I'd put it a little differently in that, um, you know, you are responsible for creating the plans and the regulations. Um, and you're appointed, you're obviously appointed by the select words. Um, so there there is some connection there. Um, that's that's intentional. Um, you are doing the plans. Um, like I said, it's a good idea while you're doing the plans or zoning bylaws and and gathering information that they're part of. Your information gathering process. Um, I'd also. I guess suggest you look at the budgetary budget budgetary process. Um, they control the budgets. Um. If you want to do outside of outside work, you may need, you know, if you want to conduct a study, you may need some money for that study. Um, so you should, you know, understand what you want to undertake and then speak with the select board about. The budgetary requirements that you have. Um, maybe you go out and get a municipal planning grant or a. Um, this was a zoning for great neighborhoods grant that's funding my work here. Um, but it also requires, I mean, think a little bit of a match um from from the select board from the town.
Bristol's policy is all grants need to be approved. By the select word. Um, hard application. So before application, okay. They they they'd like to know before somebody goes down the path whether. Well, that that makes common sense for everybody's benefit. Yeah.
Yep. So um, so you interact with them on that level and um. You know, depending on the resources that they give you, um will will dictate to a large extent the the things that. You can do within your authority, right?
A lot of the smaller projects that we were talking for, like where we might seek out for like infrastructure or or recreation, that kind of thing. Most of the time the boards come up with those ideas and you run it the other direction. They go they go to the select word and say. Hey, we wanna we wanna do this. Is that something you back?
Right.
They ninety nine point nine percent of the time like, you're willing to do the work here. Go for it.
Yeah, and you have a recreation board, right? A lot of a lot of other towns in Addison County don't necessarily have that. Um, but you know, you've created a plan um for the town of Bristol. It's got a lot of implementation ideas in there on. A pretty broad uh. Array of planning subjects. You can you have the ability to advocate for those um with your select board and the budget that they give you. To a large extent will determine, you know, what what you can undertake. Okay, so everybody ready to move on to open meeting law?
Good.
All right, great. Um, so I'm actually, let's see, gonna go. Um. And I'm gonna read you very, very short um the the statute, so the Vermont statute that tells the town what you have to do with the open meeting law. Um, and it's it's basically this. The legislature find and declares that public commissions, boards and councils and other public agencies in the state. Exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business and are accountable to them pursuant to chapter one, article six of the Vermont constitution. So that's kind of the the why for the open meeting law. Um, you are accountable to basically your citizens, the town of Bristol's citizens in this case. Um, and because of that, because you're accountable, they need to basically have access to your meeting. Um, so open meeting law is really um. Basically a way to give people access to their their represent representatives um when they're undertaking their business. Um, so it applies every time um a quorum of a public body. If five of you were to go out to dinner and talk about planning, uh, you have nine reps, right?
Right.
Yeah, five of you were to go out to dinner and talk about planning in the town of Bristol or zoning or things of that nature could be deemed a public meeting. Um. So just something. Um, you have you have authority over it. You're taking you. Involved in a discussion or taking action or form. So it's something you need to be thoughtful about and and the purpose of the public meeting. Um, dictates why you need to be thoughtful about. You're doing work for the citizens of Bristol and you need to. They need to have an ability to participate. Um, and and Bristol does a lot for that anyway with the uh with with your public access TV.
I mean, one time we run into that as a community, it's with our select word actually. Um, because we had two, we still do two, I'm into the fire department on the select board. And at our annual meeting. We invite the rest of the select word numbers. We have all five select word members at that meeting. But it's not, oh, they were just there as guests. So it was just that it there was a big question on. Do we have to take minutes for that, publish it and do everything else? And as long as they're they aren't discussing town business. At that, they're just there as. As a citizen, not as a representative, they it was deemed okay. So they had to use their discretion. Uh, and they're they're good about separation. So it it, if I understand this correctly. Four members of the planning commission go out to dinner and discuss planning. It's not a public meeting, but if five members go, it is.
Yeah, you because those four members would not have any authority to act.
Okay.
Because it's not a forum. So the test is basically, is there a forum?
Yeah.
Um, are you discussing basically something that you have jurisdiction over and do you have the ability to act?
Yeah, okay, great.
Okay. So next one, please. Ah, good.
I have a question, sorry.
Sure.
If that's a if that's a plan where four people go out together or five whatever, is that? Are you talking about is they're just getting together and talking? It's not a. Planned, we're going to discuss what things that we need to do kind of thing.
So I'm gonna go back one slide and if you look at the the bottom. Um, so a quorum, so it's five, not four in your case, because there are nine members, so you need a quorum. And then involved in a discussion or taking an action. And number three is goes to what you were asking. I think it's the subject matter. Um, of the discussion is one which you so where you're specifically talking, you can you, five of you could go out and talk baseball all you wanted. Um, nobody's gonna care because you're not doing the people's business, but if you're talking about planning or zoning or or something that you do have authority over. Then basically it it could be deemed an illegal public meeting. So um the way to get around this is just to just to think about it.
Okay, my question actually kind of was um. I'm trying to, I don't even know how to put it, but if people are just getting together and there's no. Notification to other. Commission members. You know what I'm saying? I mean, is that something that if if you end up with a quorum? Whether you planned it or not, would you have to notify the rest of the planning commission?
Well, if no, so if if five of you get together to watch a baseball game and you never spoke about planning. Or zoning or or anything that that's the planning commission, you would not, you would not need to do that. Um. If if you planned to get together and you planned to talk about it and you didn't notify everybody, you would be holding a. A uh and you'd be violating the open meeting law.
Okay, I got you.
So now I.
So so the answer is be ca- the answers be thoughtful.
Yeah.
Um, when you when you're all together, you can't next necessarily talk planning commission shop. Is is kind of the answer. You can talk baseball. Um, or or other things, but not uh not planning commissions things.
So basically, if there were four, this is kind of going crazy, but if there are four of you and you start talking about it and then a fifth person shows up and makes it a quorum, then you need to stop.
Yep, yes.
Got it, okay.
So I I don't wanna get too down in the weeds, but this is uh this is so hard to parse sometimes. We've had this about our emails, for instance. Say, um, I have a barbecue in my backyard. I invite twenty people. Five of whom happen to be members of the planning commission. And then someone who's not on the commission says, so what have you guys been doing lately on the planning commission? Or do we have to say, sorry, we can't do this here?
Well, so one of the ways we've I've handled that in the past is uh if let's say we're in that public setting in a barbecue and you want to know what's going on with planning. You and I can go over and have a one on one conversation away from the rest of the group and that's really as a member. That's your best thing to do is separate yourself from the rest of the of the of the team, for lack of better terms. Um, and that way you guarantee you're not violating.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think that's good advice.
So it's it's an intent thing. Um. You you are representing the citizens of Bristol and you want to um recognize that they have a constitutional right to to understand and know when you're doing things.
Yeah.
And and that's what this law is set up to protect. So it it. A lot of it can be addressed with with common sense. Um, and then it also has some um basically notice requirements.
Rob, did you have a question?
Yes, uh, and I know there's a lot more to this than than the slide or a quick conversation you probably answer, but you. Basically, email was briefly touched on with open meeting law and email. You know, we've been trying to operate under the assumption that a reply all and that sort of chain of correspondence would violate. Open meeting. Is that still hold true? Or is there, since it's not an active involved conversation, does open meeting law not apply no matter who's involved in the email chain?
So I would tell you, email can, email chains can definitely be meetings because you can basically be. Um, you can have five P, five members of the planning commission on it. If you look at the kind of the three steps that are up on the slide. Um, you could have a forum on the email list. Um, you could have a discussion, right? I could say one thing, I'm not. Here, but if I were a member, I could say one thing, you could respond, et cetera. The others would see it. And the again, it's the last one, the subject matter of the discussion is one which the body has authority and responsibility. So. You can engage with Chris in administrative uh. Functions. Do we have a meeting tomorrow night? Um, you know, are we gonna make quorum? That type of thing, but you can't talk about basically the substance of the plans or the regulations or the other work that you're doing. Does does that make sense?
Yeah, I was just looking for a little more clarification on that because that's always a dicey one where the tendency when information goes out, the tendency of a lot of people is to hit reply all and. Try to address something in the moment instead of waiting till meeting time or sending it back to just Chris or the. Chairperson to disseminate in a different manner at a later time or something like that.
Yep, um, no, it's a good question. Um. So it it really, it it's really focused on the substance of the the discussion. And if i- if it's a substantive discussion and there there's a quorum there, then then you would be violating the open meeting law.
But if if the discussion is just, here's the agenda is what we do. Here's the agenda. Everybody okay with it? That's okay.
Yes.
Or who's gonna be able to make it tonight?
Yeah.
Or is there whatever you wanna add? Um, yeah, so Rob, my general. Rule of thumb in life is I I don't use reply all um. In anything board related. Even if it is something as simple as whether I'm gonna make the meeting or not. Um, I feel that if I send that back to whoever sent the original email, if it was if it was pertinent, they would inform the entire group. Um, I I just find that that's a cleaner method. That's my own personal.
Good. Okay, everybody ready to move on? Okay, um. Let's see, so we talked a little bit about um what's the difference between a a meeting? And a legislative hearing and a quasi judicial hearing earlier and then and for purpose of the public meeting law, there's, I guess, there's um. Different gradations of responsibility and because there are different gradations of responsibility or actions, things are taking. There are different uh notice requirements. So a meeting like this. We're we're sitting, talking, you could hold a public meeting, you can invite everybody in the public. Um, is kind and and you can talk about about things. It's it's what you do probably most of the time. Um, so public needs to know about it, needs to be able to go and give you their opinion if they choose to. Um. So you have to give them at least forty eight hours notice, um have to do some posting um for regular meetings. Um, but it's got the, I guess, the lowest um. Bar or the lowest number of hoops that you need to jump through in order to give public notice. A legislative hearing would be something like, we're going to adopt this plan or we're going to adopt these bylaws. Um, we're gonna hold a hearing to hear what you, the people have to say about these regulations. Here they are. Um. You they come, they're afforded the opportunity to speak. It's a little more formal because you're you're not at the information gathering stages of things anymore. You've. Put your um your plan or your or your regulations on the table and said, we, this is what we think. Um, would be best for the town of Bristol and we're formally asking for your opinions. So um needs to be in fifteen days in the newspaper of record. Um. And certified mailings to neighboring towns, the agency of commerce, the regional planning commission. So there there are some other uh. Other hoops that you need to jump through through regulars. Through legislative hearings. If you think about it, it's you're doing more than what you would do at a normal meeting. Um, the last one, the quasi judicial hearing um is the one where there is. Potentially the most impact on a landowner or an applicant or or their neighbors. So that one has the most uh most notice requirements.
What would be an example of where you would need a quasi judicial hearing? Could you give one?
So it's something it wouldn't be for you.
Yeah, we have for you for here.
Yeah, no, but I know.
You all would have seen what I see is anytime the DRB gets there, the only time they get together is for hearings. So like if somebody applies their subdivision.
Okay.
There they have, that's a hearing, um so that they the neighbors and or interested parties can offer input. Um. Folks who are questioning the project or want more information can attend. They they then become.
And at the end of the, at the end of the hearing, the DRB will make a decision. Yes, we think we're going to issue a permit for what you've applied for or. No, we're gonna deny that or this. So. Somebody, the applicant or some have have a significant amount invested in the in in the question. And that's why it has the most uh. The most requirements for for public notice.
Yes, yes, it does. So it's where there's discretion on the part of the DRB or the select word. They can approve or not approve the subdivision require request.
So what we've done in our rights and most times have adopted. Is any hearing requires this. A level of notification. Really, the biggest deviation is the seven or fifteen days in Bristol, uh like the downtown. Design Review Commission, they have quasi judicial hearings, but their requirements are only seven day notification.
Um.
Site plan, I think, is seven days.
I think site plan is the other one that we do. I think it's the only two we do. Everything else. It was easier and most times have gone this route that just dump it in the fifteen day bucket and get all check all the boxes. It's just let's. Make sure you get it. You don't want to end up in E court. And find out that it it ends up getting kicked back.
Because you didn't have enough.
This we did, it was a process that failed, not the project.
Yeah.
And I and I don't want to be responsible for that.
Sure. So so by making all of the hearings, the quasi judicial hearings requirements the same for everybody, it. It makes it easier for the. Development review board and and Chris to understand and maintain and and not get not get caught up in procedural differences. Okay?
Yeah.
Um, next one.
Yes, there's I lost my mouse for a second.
Okay, um, let's see. So again, meetings versus hearing, what what happens, right? Um, meetings, you're just discussing business, general general legislative business. Um, basically, ever anybody can speak at a meeting. Um, the chair has to retain some control, but but for the most part, everybody gets to speak. Um, the legislative hearings, again, um receiving a formal public comment on a course of action. Um, and and that's generally the planning commission or the select order holding those hearings. Um, and then judicial hearings, we just talked about, um. Um, and then judicial hearings, we just talked about, um, a party seeking board approval. And the board is issuing either an approval or denial. So on a proposed project. So. The board chair, um. Uh, in basically differentiating the chair from the other members of the board, the board chairs in in control. Basically, the board chair is responsible for the meeting. Um, so the board chair is responsible for um, making sure. You know, things go in a timely manner, making sure that everybody understands the business being discussed. Um, basically ensuring that all participants um. Are given the right to speak. Um. And and that that varies depending on whether it's a meeting or whether it's a quasi judicial hearing. Um. Let's see, bringing the board to resolution, explaining next steps and and basically keep keeping control of the meeting. Making sure it proceeds in an orderly fashion. Um, so again, this is, and why are you doing that? You're protecting due process by running in an efficiently, efficient orderly meeting where everyone who has the right to speak gets to speak. Where you manage the evidence, where you manage conflicts of interest, where you take good media minutes. Um, basically, it all protects due process. It all protects, again, the citizen's interest in understanding what's going on in their, in their government. And that is that. Happy to take any questions. I did an excellent job. I don't hear any questions.
Anyone have questions? Who has questions?
Anybody? So just, uh, so I'll go ahead with the question, if no one else has. Um, so. Now that we're moving ahead, jumping ahead to our next uh, thing, which is the the study on uh, how to. How, whether and how to modify the zoning bylaws. When we come up with proposals, assuming we do, then we will have to hold a quasi. We'll have to hear it, not a quasi judicial hearing, a public hearing on that and get comment before we send it to the select board. Which will also hold a public hearing and then it will go to a vote. That will be the process after the study is finished.
Right, that's the end of the process.
That's the end of the process.
Yeah, okay.
Um, between now and then, and and for for basically next meeting. Um, what uh, what I talked with Kevin about is we're gonna be. So the the project that I'm working on with you on, you probably already know this, is. Is how, what modifications can we make to either your zoning and I would say your subdivision regulations? Since we didn't do them very long ago, um, that can help. Um, basically improve people's ability to develop housing. Um, and it's largely limited to your, the village planning area. Um, that's what we got the money for. So what changes can you make to the zoning? What changes could you make to the subdivision? Um, that will improve people's ability to develop more housing. And it it goes to uh, Chris's comment earlier where in your ARPA study, what twenty-five percent or so of the people said. We we need to address more housing. And and Bristol's had some, some housing projects going on. It probably has more than most other towns in Addison County. So you're, you're off to a good start. Um, this project will address, well, what else can we do? So um, next meeting, what I'd like to do is is bring you kind of a. A smorgasbord of ideas to discuss. And that can be anything from lot sizes, setbacks. Parking, um.
Density.
Dense, lot sizes density, yes. Um, changes that you can make to your regulations. Um, that uh, that would improve housing. Um, it could be accessory, accessory housing uses, accessory apartments. Do you wanna change the language specific to there? Um, it it could be, you know, where do we allow duplexes or where do we allow um, small multifamily units or large multifamily units? So um, it can cover a number of things.
That's probably the biggest one that we need to address. In in my mind is do, is we, we went to the whole density based model.
Yeah.
So it's one dwelling unit per quarter acre.
Mm-hmm.
Well, if you have a quarter acre, you can't put duplex on because it's two dwelling units. Well, the impact of that duplex really isn't much more than. A a single family home. So it's that multifamily homes, it's like coming up with a better mechanism where we can see some better infill.
Mm-hmm.
So that's just my two cents on one of the. Oh, yeah, it comes to my, that's what I see the most at my office. What I wanna do is convert or build a duplex and I can't.
Mm-hmm.
So they end up going down that.
Cause they only have a quarter acre.
Yeah, or whatever the, they they maxed out their density for their, for their unit, for their lot.
For their lot, okay.
Um, and so then they try to go down the route of, oh, we'll just do an accessory dwelling unit instead. We may aren't happy that it can only be a one bedroom, that can't be more than a thousand square feet and blah blah. So. We we've sort of created this, a lot of people are doing accessory dwelling units more as a workaround of the system than for what the intent was. Which was to create um, some smaller housing opportunities.
Anyone else have comments or questions on that that would help Adam um, prepare for? So I'd love to see your survey results or the the survey results that deal with housing. The kind of some of the feedback that you got to help me develop some of the the questions and topics for you.
It's pretty broad.
Okay, well.
I have, I have one comment on my, that I, in my mind, and this was just in my mind, the way I always frame this was. It wasn't just to our, improve our ability to develop more housing. Because more housing could be. That's a million dollar units that only very few people could buy, but it was to go like more flexible and affordable housing.
I think that's a fair comment, yes. Sh, the market also, that's becoming probably the number one challenge, the the real estate market's taken off. So outlandishly, the the affordable housing has been lost. You you go from. Nothing to four hundred thousand dollars. And it's like that, and there's nothing in between.
And there's hardly anything for four hundred thousand dollars in Bristol as far as I know.
Yeah.
Much more than that.
So it's. That's the challenge is how, how to promote. I would love to, hopefully, that's something you all can try to come up with a great plan for. Which is how to promote smaller houses, better use of the land. Something along those lines, because that is, I tell everyone, we're, we're missing in Bristol, in most communities, I was, I heard in the startup and underhouses. The first time home buyer, the retiree, they went for the nine hundred square foot, one or two bedroom, single story house.
And and if you look at our Vermont's demographics and Bristol's demographics, there's, there's a reason for that. There are a lot more retirees or or older people than there are. So I'll, I'll bring you some statistics, but um, I would say that where, you know. Nuclear families used to be thirty or forty percent of the market, they're probably down to twenty percent of the market. Retirees are probably gone from ten to twenty percent of the market. Um, so there, there's, the, the demographics help to explain the shifting needs in the market.
Yeah.
And I do that. Yeah, and I think we, we discussed the demographics in the plan. More, more in smaller units, in the family units.
To be interesting, that's why the, the housing project next to the fire station should be a. A unique, that is predominantly small one bedroom apartments. So.
Do any of you have any other questions or thoughts about the the process we're gonna go through?
I have one more question, because I interrupt people from other towns discussing this and having too much discussion over here. But the impact of the short term rental market like Airbnb's on housing. Do we have any data on that for Bristol?
I have it for Addison County, um. Let me, let me ask. Um, I don't, I don't know the answer to it off the top of my head for Bristol. Um.
I mean, I, one of the things I do is, I'm maybe monthly, maybe every two months. I run, I cruise the Airbnb's. Well, mostly because I wanna know if somebody's converted a chair, fire or garage and something in there and they're renting it out. Is a, is a dwelling unit that's not.
Yeah.
Um, and knocking the door and like, hey, let's, let's turn this incorrectly and continue. We don't have a ton in Bristol, uh, if you look at the listings. And there. I don't see, I don't think we're losing a lot of housing opportunity. We're, unlike Burlington or some of the. I know in Hampton, I was working out there on the lakefront, they had a lot of. Houses that were converted into just pure rentals. Burlington, it's a bunch of.
Yeah.
Small rental units converted into Airbnb's. Um, we don't see a ton of it here. I don't think we've lost a lot of housing stock necessarily in Bristol.
Okay, but it'll be good to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's generally true for Addison County too, with some, some exceptions on the lakefront.
Okay.
And and right around the break.
I'd say right around college is the other spot.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments for Adam?
Thank you so much, Adam.
Great, thank you.
See you.
Next meeting.
Next meeting, which would be, what is our date?
The first.
First Tuesday in October, whenever that is. Um. That would be October fourth. Hmm, does that work?
So I may not be here, but I will get someone here to speak with you. Um, I've got a, I'm gonna be away at a wedding.
Nice.
Yeah, um. But I will make sure I can get someone here to cover for me.
Great.
Um, okay. Seven P M. And Chris, in the meantime, we'll talk about the, this, what survey results you have.
Yeah, the other option too, Jeff, that we have is.
You could change.
Because you have, you have it set up to be twice a month. You have your research for the first and the third.
Right.
Would the third Tuesday work for you, Adam?
Oh, the eighteen.
Of October?
Of what? October eighteenth would certainly work, yeah.
Would it make sense to defer two weeks and bump to the eighteenth and that way you don't miss? So we, so we stay, I'd like to stay consistent with Adam.
Yeah.
I think anyone from your office could do it, but I think you're saying with one person's more consistent option for you.
Any comments from anyone about um, moving to the eighteenth, the next meeting to the eighteenth?
That's fine for me.
Anyone have any problems with that?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, well, I'll, I'll check with Kevin, make sure it's okay with him. Oh, you're the chair, you make the decision.
Okay, alright, okay. We'll move to the eighteenth then.
Well, great, thank you for accommodating me. I just thought of that one. Appreciate it, yeah. Good, so I will see you all then. Um, enjoy the rest of your meeting and thank you for having me. Nice to see you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will type up the other some data. As I continue on now. Yeah, I'll jump back. Um, you're up and running.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. So uh, the question is, since it's now ten after eight, do we want to go over the miscellaneous correspondence? Or if, or do we want to wait till the next meeting to do that? Any?
Is there anything of note that we need to address in any of that correspondence?
Um, well, I can mention a few things. Um, uh, Kevin included the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Minutes for their last two meetings. Um, the most notable thing for me is that they haven't had a forum for either meeting. Uh, they only had two members present, which is unfortunate. Um, but they seem to hold a meeting anyway. Which I guess is then not a public meeting, from what we've just been told. Um, I'm not sure exactly how that works. Um. Kevin received a request, and this is all, you know, information I've received from Kevin. Um, from the um. The West Central Vermont Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Survey. Um, the, uh, we were asked for comment on that. Um, it seems sort of way beyond our capability. Um, we really need a lot of technical input, so Kevin did not comment on that. Um. There, there's a series of meetings being held on the Lake Champlain Sea Grant Flooding Impacts. Um, Kevin sent that out also. There was a, there's a series of events and you can look at that. Um. That information that Kevin got, that correspondence, if you're interested in in this about flooding impacts. We also received from the Addison County Regional Planning Commission, not from Adam. A request for comment on a health equity survey. Uh, Kevin sent this out to you, I don't know if anyone took, took a look at it. We both found it very confusing because we said health equity, well, that's about people's access to healthcare. Right? Well, it's not. It's um. As it's defined, it's health equity is the state in which everyone has a fair and just opportunity. To attain their highest level of health. And it says, there's a, there's a link. This, this is the one, um, no, that's the municipal planning grant.
I only have how many of these?
Oh, yeah, it's hard to find them. Yeah, it's, maybe I can tell you in a second. Um, it's like the fifth one maybe. Yeah. No, that's not it.
People over your shoulder, how's that?
Yeah, okay, yeah, sure. So it says like. At a municipal level, this can mean increasing physical activity, improving bike pedestrian connections. Encouraging housing structures to have front porches. Increasing access to committee meetings through remote options. Maybe you could bring this up, Chris, the health equity survey and share it. Kevin got a, a email about it and then there's a link. No, no, you were there, there it is. And then if you go to the link, yeah, there's the link.
It's the something that I go after share.
Is this, is this something that, that is time sensitive or is this something we can?
Well, they didn't have a time. Yeah, it's just, um, i- i- if you, you might wanna take a look because Kevin and I were really confused by this. How, you know, how um, encouraging front porches. Uh, increased health equity, it just seemed, uh, we couldn't figure out what to comment on this. So if anyone, have anyone has any thoughts on this, you you might wanna look at this and you can, and can discuss it at the next meeting. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
Uh, that's, that's all I meant to say, but uh, you can see why we were, I think you can see why we were a bit confused by it.
Yeah. Some little questions.
Um, so i- if you have a chance, take a look at it before the next meeting and we can talk about it then. Uh, Kevin also got information from the Conservation Commission. That they are applying for a municipal planning grant to better understand wildlife corridors. And associated documentation. Um, and Kevin said, we had no objection to that, we just wanted to be kept informed. Because it, it links closely to the town plan. Uh, so if they should get such a grant, we'll want to work closely with them on on what they're doing. Uh, and as I mentioned, uh, Kevin also posted, we have to sign contract with the Addison County Regional Planning Commission to do the study. Which we've been discussing this evening. So any? Comments or questions on any of those?
Um, okay, um, any public comments? From the public? We have no, we have no public. We're open to the public, but they didn't come, uh, okay, uh, does anyone have anything else that we haven't discussed that they would like to raise then? Before we, uh, ask for a motion for adjournment? Okay, well, I was very grateful to Adam for coming in, I thought it was a very, I learned a lot, um, and so I'm looking forward to the next one. Um, can we have a motion to adjourn then? Rob, motions, any second?
Second.
Okay, we have lots of seconds, uh, all in favor, say aye or raise your hands.
Aye.
Okay.
Pretty unanimous to me.
We, we adjourn, thanks, everybody, so the next meeting will not be on the fourth, it will be on the eighteenth of October. Great, thanks, thank you all.